Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:00 PM and we are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We have late cam recording and is anyone else recording? Hearing none. I will, just for the record, we do have a quorum. The only member missing is David Lodge. And just for anyone who missed our last meeting, our new town planner Nancy Darfey is with us again this evening.
Yep.
And Kathy.
And Ari.
As usual. And moving on to agenda item number one. We have a public hearing at 7 o'clock for 43 Main Street upon the application for approval of a definitive plan submitted by Lakeville Owner LLC to consolidate the existing parcels remaining lots four and five, lot 5A, lot 6D, parcel A and parcel B, and subdivide into two buildable lots, lot one and two, and a roadway located at 43 Main Street. Map block, map 060, block 007, lot 001, lot 001D, lot 001G, lot 001I, lot 001J, lot 001L, and lot 001P with possible vote. And I will read the notice of public hearing. The Lakeville Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, on Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street, to consider the application of Lakeville Owner LLC for approval of a definitive plan submitted by VHB to consolidate the existing parcels remaining lots four and five, lot 5A, lot 6D, parcel A and parcel B, and subdivide into two buildable lots, one and two, and a roadway located at 43 Main Street. And with the aforementioned map block lots, the application and assorted documents can be viewed in the Planning Department by appointment or the Planning Board's webpage. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the hearing for 43 Main Street. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is open. Hello.
Good evening, for the record, John O'Leary. Good to see you all again. So we are here this evening to discuss and present a subdivision. So I think important to note that this subdivision doesn't change anything of what we were doing. This just sort of resets and starts from clean the underlying property lines that are existing on the property. So as the Chair mentioned, this property is divided up pretty dramatically into, I want to say, six or seven different lots in its current state. This proposed subdivision will effectively combine all of those lots, creating a single subdivision road in the rear Off-Road Island Road. Lot one is proposed as a little under two acres. Well, 1.8 acres, let's call it. And then lot two is the balance of the property. This was considered throughout our permitting process, really from day one. And sort of, sort of two functions. The first was candidly was to freeze the zoning. When we had initially proposed this plan, there was consideration for the underlying zoning in the mixed-use district to potentially be changed, which affected our proposal. So strategically, we wanted to freeze that zoning. That was the purpose for the preliminary subdivision. The definitive subdivision that we have pulled forward and presented to you all this evening does serve a function and a purpose for what we intend to do. And really, that main purpose is to create a distinct and separate lot for the wastewater treatment plant. From a business purpose, it's helpful to have that lot be sort of its own entity and each of the three remaining projects would own their proportionate share of that entity and therefore control the treatment plant. So it does kind of serve as a business function for us, which is why we continued from the preliminary subdivision plan to the definitive subdivision plan. The other item to note is that all of the review that we went through with Environmental Partners, aka Apex Engineering, all of their stormwater review, traffic review, review of Site Civil was included. This subdivision was included as part of their review. So it wasn't like they just didn't look at this piece of the property. This property has already been pretty thoroughly and heavily reviewed. Really, I think the only review that needed to happen from where I sit, and I might be misspeaking here, but was a review from the zoning. But was the review of the zoning, which I believe Nate Darlin did. He did flag one thing, which I'll let Annie speak on, but we have since made those changes and resubmitted a revised set, which is dated January 9th. And I believe that should be the updated set that you all are working on. But I'll let Annie speak to sort of what that change was.
Yeah, thanks, John. Annie Gorman with VHB. I prepared some graphics, some colored graphics that'll pass out. Just so I show the change a little bit.
And we can make these publicly available films. I don't know if you can get to your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so with the first sheet, you can see, you know, shown in green is the subdivision that we had submitted back in December. Nate had reached out to us and brought to our attention that there's an area limit zone that is called the front yard circle requirement. And the front yard circle requirement makes it so that there's a 160-foot diameter circle touching the front yard property line. Yeah. And the diameter of the circle is not supposed to touch any of the side property lines for the whole circle. So we made that adjustment. In order to accommodate the circle, we extended the subdivision road about 85 feet. It didn't change really much else. Just, it was just a minor change to the property lines. And we, as John mentioned, we resubmitted those plans on January 9th.
All right. Yes. We do have one thing in our packet from the fire chief. I'm not sure if this has been shared with you. So I'll read it. This document serves as a comment on the proposed subdivision plan for the property located at 43 Main Street. The fire department requests that the following conditions be added as a requirement of any plan approval. All non-approved, uninspected commercial trash operations cease immediately and any unpermitted dumpster greater than six yards in size be immediately removed from the property. During recent months, a commercial trash operation has been using this property to store dumpsters greater than six yards without a permit. Additionally, refuse has been stored on the property overnight. There are requirements for trash storage in the fire code. The operator has failed to notify the fire department of this operation or sought inspection of the site. Per the fire code, the property owner is the responsible party for any fire code violation found at a given location. So now I understand this wasn't a butter. But are you aware of this situation?
Yes, we were made aware. We reached out to the butter, notified him that this was a problem. He's a relatively new owner of the property and I don't think he knew where his property ended and ours began. So Annie's team, their survey team actually went out and staked the property line so that there's, he now can see where his property begins and where his property ends. And we've asked him to remove those dumpsters. It was my understanding that that had been completed. If it hasn't, we can certainly correct it. And if a condition of approval is that those be removed from the property, we're comfortable with that. Again, I thought that was already resolved and I apologize that it wasn't.
I just want to make sure that, you know, publicly for the record, that it's.
We're aware of it. We're trying to correct it as best we can.
Perfect.
Chairman, also Kathy received an email from a property owner late this afternoon. Diane Reed.
Oh, right, from the Bridge. Did you? I did see it included in the last minutes, the middles. This is from Diane Reed and Bruce Hendrickson from Nine Bridge Street Crossing. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but her concern is about the Bridge Street entrance as well as the light that we know is supposed to go in in that location. But we know from this project, you're going, the 40B has to do with that dog leg. You don't own the property right directly in front. Someone else owns that property in front of the hospital property that you own. So you just have that dog leg area and that would be something ZBA with the 40B because that has not, that's not to do with this. But so that's what this email was about. It's acknowledged. I agree. It's a bad intersection, something should be done. It's not a town road, it's a state road. I know that we had money at some point from the state, but we also had to put in money. And so now it's, you know, up to the town to determine, you know, whether it's something from remediation through the 40B or not. But that's really not the sport, it's pretty. Jack, did you have a?
It talks about without a permit. Has this trash collector got the permit from the town yet?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
I think the main, the main goal was to have it moved off of this property.
Yeah. But if not, there are requirements of trash storage without a permit.
Well, so because it was on their property, it became their problem. But now if it's on the right property owner's property, that's now it's his.
It was news to me when the fire chief reached out, so we didn't know. He sent me a similar, similar letter, so.
Any other questions from Planning Board members?
No, this time.
No?
No, good.
Any comments?
No.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from the public? Okay, so I think we have a very straightforward plan in front of us. It's combining some lots and creating two. One that's very large. And I know from previous meetings, you do plan on coming back for some A&Rs.
That's right.
So eventually those different sections that are, that are to be built upon from the site plan review process, you'll A&R those.
And those draft A&Rs, Annie corrected me for wrong, but those draft A&Rs are included in our site plan packages that we presented to you all. So if you want to see what those will look like and what those lot dimensions and those things, it's in there.
All right, so I think we should just move forward with a standard set of conditions. As far as, I think it just needs to be basic because everything was covered in the site plan review. We already, like he's, he mentioned Environmental Partners. That's our peer review engineer that the town hires. They pay for, but we hire. And they do all of the engineering work on behalf of the town. So we have had a thorough engineering review of these projects.
Chairman, would you like to add the condition about the trash?
Yes, you might as well throw that condition in for good measure. Absolutely.
Anything else to see? What is the condition on this?
No, I think, like I said, I think we've, we've got a pretty good condition and decision for the other two that we worked through. I just want to see some basic conditions. And then we can either wait, we can continue and just let you review that draft.
Yeah, that works. When's your next hearing? Would it be something that we could discuss in?
February 13th. February 13th.
I mean, if we're able to see those conditions like 24 hours in advance, I'd be very pleased.
I'd love to come see you well before that. That's my hope.
Okay, so February 13th. Would someone like to make that motion to continue?
Yep, I'll make a motion to continue the 43 Main Street till our next meeting, February 13th, 2025.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The hearing is continued. Thank you. Agenda item number two, A&R Plan, 80 Southworth Street and 5 Fairway Drive, SFG Associates, Inc., possible vote.
Good evening, I'm Bradford Scherr from SFG Engineering, 28 Main Street, Lakeville. This is a simple land swap, found a land swap. So we're looking to take a piece of land from 5 Fairway and transfer it to 80 Southworth. And we're looking to take the exact same size piece of land from 80 Southworth and transfer it back to 5 Fairway. So there's no change in area of the lots. There's a slight change in frontage. The lot on Southworth gains about 18 feet of frontage. The one on Fairway Drive has 317 feet of frontage on Fairway Drive. There's no issues with frontage or area. You know, these lots were created prior to the most recent zoning changes. So they still meet all zoning requirements at the time that they were created.
Any questions from the board?
I had one. So I just did a quick, like, Google map search because I was just curious of where this was. So Fairway Drive does have a garage or shed, right? Like accessory building that kind of butts up against that Southworth Street? Am I correct or am I wrong?
I don't know that.
Because I just, I know that, looking at it, it looked, it looked close to the existing property line. So I just didn't know. It wasn't shown here, but I, if you look, even if you pull it up, it's hard to see. So it was an existing accessory building that was down there. I was just wondering what, how close that would be to that property line, I guess. Now, I guess it's an existing building, but I just, I was just looking at it. I just didn't see it on this plan.
Ah.
Yeah. I don't know whether it's there or not. My partner did the field survey. I would have thought he would have located it if it was still there. But I can't answer that question 100%.
Is that where it says? No, wait, there's this tank.
This car is garage?
Yeah, no, it's not that one. It's, it's part of the, part of the Fairway Drive property that's in the back there. Again, I'm not, I'm just, I just didn't see it. But I was, again, I was just looking when I was just searching around. It wasn't, wasn't on the plumes.
Are you saying it's near the, is it near the house?
It is. It's, it's pretty much sitting right where it says remainage front, remaining, you know, where it says lot A to be conveyed. It's pretty much sits right there, if not closer.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, I cannot answer that. I don't know the answer.
But again, I could be, I'm assuming I, yeah.
Is it, did you drive by or was it?
No, I said, I was just, I did a Google.
On Google map?
Or a Google map search, but unless it got torn down, but that's fine. I just, I don't know.
That's possible. Do you have the, the road view?
Yeah.
And that, does it show it on there?
Yeah.
It does.
So finally. It's, this is it, right? So that's 80, that's 80 Southworth Street.
So neither, none of the homeowners are present this evening?
Not that I know of, no. No. They're probably not moving towards the south building. I don't, I mean, again, it's an existing building, but we're putting it closer. Moving a property line that's a part of the existing.
Oh, it's not this right here?
No. The building sits.
Right there?
Yeah, it did.
I mean, maybe further over. Again, I'm just looking at it so I don't, I'm not, I didn't go up and survey it and drive by. I just noticed it when I was looking at it, when I was just checking it out. So again, I'm just, just asking. So not that, but if I'm sitting there and I'm looking at where they're, they're moving it over 18 feet, 20 feet, but you could see it through. Again, I'd have to drive by, but I didn't get a chance to drive by.
I didn't either. But your surveyor didn't?
He didn't pick it up, no. So it's, either it's gone or maybe it was overgrown. I don't know.
Does it say a date on that? Sometimes they'll show a date. Hold on a minute.
August 21st. I'll take a look.
Of 2021? Oh, okay, so it was three years ago. So maybe, maybe it's been removed?
I have a feeling it might have been. Could be.
I know for myself, I'm glad that you showed the well and the existing septic because that's something I think we need to make sure on A&Rs are shown so that it doesn't become a problem, you know, crossing into your neighbor's yard to deal with your.
Yeah, it's fine, but if it was an existing accessory building that wasn't on there and you're moving a property line closer to that accessory building because the, again, it was a substantial accessory building. It's like a two-bedroom garage with power to it, so I don't know where.
We didn't see that. I didn't, I didn't.
That doesn't look that old.
Again, it's shown on the, the basic map.
Well, are you okay if we continue this and just determine whether or not this, this building is in fact in that area?
Yes, I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
I apologize that, you know, if it's there, I apologize that we didn't show it.
Okay. Well, we'll, if you have to update, you know, the plan, so be it. If not, then we can just.
Move on, yeah.
Move on. So would someone like to make a motion to continue us to February 13th?
I'll make a motion to continue the A&R till February 13th. Thank you.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you next month. All right, agenda item number three, A&R. Plan 10, Penitary Drive, scene of land surveyors, possible vote. Good evening, welcome back. I see that you have filed an official A&R. And I, although I, the copy that I have doesn't have a stamp, I heard that you did submit a stamp.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. And so you're just looking to create the two lots this evening?
Yeah, I mean, where we were asking the first time about a possible variance because the circle didn't fit where the house was.
Right, but that wouldn't go through this board. We don't deal with the variances.
No, we moved the front yard circle to where it is on the other frontage of Penitary Drive. So both these lots should be conforming. They meet all the criteria. I don't think there's anything deep to think about here.
Yep, so you have the front yard circles, you have the appropriate frontage, the setback. I see the well. Do you know where the existing septic is on lot 1E?
The what?
The existing septic system for lot 1E?
No, I don't.
Okay. I would expect it to be close to.
It's on the Lions property.
It's on the what?
There is no septic system on 1F.
Right, but on the existing, the existing home?
The existing one, the property of Lions?
No, no, we're wondering about for number 10, the.
10.
Right? You're looking for septic number 10, exactly.
Where's your septic system?
Your, your septic. Where's yours? Number 10.
Are we, are we talking about the last one of my property?
Number 10.
Right. You have one to know where the septic is on.
I'd like to ask you a question about my, the circle on my house. Can we have a few minutes to talk about it?
Right, but they want to first ask you where the septic is. Where's the septic on your house?
What is the septic on my house?
Yeah.
The septic tank.
Where's that?
Where's that?
Where?
It's between the house and the barn.
Okay.
Actually, when I put the septic tank, it was supposed to be one pit. But I put three pits and it's one year, one year only. I installed my.
So because, so when you do an A&R and you're dividing it, we do have it in our rules and regulations to show the existing well and septic so that it doesn't end up on the other lot that you're creating? Can you have that included?
The lot that I'm talking about right now tonight is the one, last one, the past.
Right, you, you just created one, one new lot.
The question that I have on my house, the circle was implemented years ago, two, three, or four years ago for the, actually to have enough upland so you can put a construction. That's what's the implementation of the one, to protect the wetland. Am I correct?
No, so it used to be an upland circle, now it's a front yard circle. It did change.
Well, if you, if you put a circle on my house that goes out by the, on a, on a south property line about a foot, that's all, the circle misses my house only for about a foot or two. But I have 332,000 square feet of my lot. There is not a piece of wetland whatsoever, not even, not even a city. So why are we applying the circle and make my house non-conforming? Because a lot, when my house was built, was conforming with all of town regulation.
So I think we, we kind of got into the weeds on this last time. I don't want to get into the weeds this time either. All of the bylaw regulations apply to everyone in town, not just you. Okay, so we do have to follow what the bylaws state. You're in front of the planning board for an A&R, okay?
But how can you?
That's what we're talking about tonight. We're not talking about anything else. Just what's shown on the plans in front of us, that's it. Okay, we're not going to go any further. So if any other planning board members have any other questions at this time?
The building inspector asked me to see if you can get a piece of land from the guy next door and you give him some.
But so that has nothing to do with this? We're, we're looking at an A&R to create one more lot.
Well, but I don't understand why the house become, when it was built, was all conformity of the regulation of the town.
So the bylaw, like I said last time, the bylaws are changed through a town meeting vote. It has to go to a two-thirds majority vote to change zoning. So it's a process. It changes the bylaws. It happens over a period of time and there's nothing that we can do about it at this time.
I understand, but it doesn't seem, I talked.
Okay, but, okay, so no more of that, okay?
Okay.
All right, moving on.
I don't know what to do now. Just let's work on this thing.
Yes, we have an A&R.
I think so. I don't know.
So we got this lot approved, the last one.
So I would like, I'd like to see the septic on here. I mean, we've been asking, you know, everybody to be consistent, show the septic in while like our rules and regulations.
Remaining of the land anyways, so it becomes conforming with the circle here.
So you're, can I just ask a question? You're wanting to know where his septic tank is on his land?
Exactly.
Obviously, there isn't an existing one on the new one because.
No.
Correct.
Yeah, no, the purpose of the septic on the existing lot is to make sure that it's not butting up against the new lot, that they would not, that they'd be hindered not to be able to put a well on it because we have to have the separation for it. So it's more just to prove that your septic's not sitting on or in a spot that's going to be a hindrance for that new lot.
So where you just said it is, it's well far away from it, between the houses, but he just wants to see it.
We just need to see it on the official plan. That's it.
That's it.
The septic tank is between the house and the.
Yep, nope.
As long as you can just add that to the plan.
If you want to see it. So it has to be printed on.
So if, yeah, if you add the septic to the plan, at next meeting, it'll be, it's going to go through us. That's all we're looking for is the septic on that. Other than that, I think we're, I think we're good. You're in compliance with adding, with separating this lot as long as the septic, the existing septic shows on.
You understand?
So the septic tanks that is not on the lot is a, is a stop to approve all of these last lot though?
Because they want to see where it is in relation to the lot. But it's not there. You got to put it on here. So that they need to see.
That's it.
Yep.
Okay.
But I mean, it has to wait till another two weeks to put that on?
So our next meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, in order to get that last one approved, is there like guidelines saying what should be shown on the thing?
Yes, we do have, if you go to the Planning Board page, there's rules and regulations. And it lists everything that should be shown on a plan for an A&R. Okay, all right, so we're going to wait another two weeks. Okay. All right, so would someone like to make a motion to continue to February?
I got millennia time.
I got millennia time left. I'll make a motion that we continue, uh, ten Panteri Drive till, uh, uh, February thirteenth, is it?
Yes. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you then. Thank you, John, thank you. Just give us a call if you have any questions. Agenda item number four, public hearing, one sixty Bedford Street, continued. Request for a special permit under section two seventy dash seven point four twelve to allow a commercial parking facility. No. Your name for the record?
Yeah, John Woodson on the attorney for the petitioner, um, J H Taylor Realty Corp.
And Ken Kupferberg on the owner's rep for J H Taylor Realty Corp.
Okay, um, so we, we have nothing new for submittals, but, um, we did, uh, reach out to town council. Because you were asking us to look at just the front lot as opposed to looking at both lots.
Correct.
And so because the drainage is on the second lot, we do have to look at the whole, the whole thing together. It can't be separated.
Okay, well, I guess that's something that we'll need to address as well. And I was unaware that town council was weighing in on that, so that certainly, um, you know. Submit, uh, some documentation as to why that may not be the case. Um, as far as the entire parcel goes, we, we are in front of conservation again on Tuesday to deal with the drainage part of that. Um, so we'll know more after the conservation meeting on Tuesday. But the focus on, on this particular, um, petition is for that front lot, the one point six acres and, and not the back lot. And it's for the, um, the parking in that area, so.
But your drainage is, is on that second lot?
Right, and that's, that's, um, that's something that conservation will address on Tuesday. We've been, uh, working with them in terms of submitting all the drainage figures and I think they're ready to take some action on, on Tuesday.
Well, we will look at drainage as well.
Sure, so we're asking to continue the hearing until after the conservation meeting. Um, to see where that stands and, and see things, how things go on Tuesday for that.
Okay, so February thirteenth for this as well?
I will not be here February thirteenth.
So the following? February twenty-seventh?
Oh, February twenty-seventh, yes.
Okay. All right, so would someone like to make a motion to continue to February twenty-seventh?
I'll make a motion to continue one sixty Bedford Street till February twenty-seventh, twenty-five.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you then. Thank you. Agenda item number five, uh, review fiscal twenty-six budget, possible vote. So we do have in our packet, we have a fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget calendar. We also have, um, from the town administrator, the budget submission and instructions. Um, I just wanted to read the top paragraph from the town administrator. It says, "The fiscal twenty twenty-six budget process will continue to challenge the organization to maintain services within limited resources. As a result, departments should not expect significant enhancements or additional resources beyond statutory or contractual requirements. However, enhancement requests are encouraged and will be addressed if possible during the year. If revenue estimates are met or otherwise, funding becomes available. I am certain that with your support, we will successfully navigate these challenges and emerge with a positive outcome." I thought that was very, very true and, um, and positive at the same time. So I appreciate his, um, input on that. Um, so we have a snapshot of the planning budget. Showing the twenty twenty-five, um, original budget at.
One forty-four.
One forty-four, eight hundred eighty-six.
Mm-hmm.
So typically it goes up two point five percent on a yearly basis. Um, and I would expect that would be what this planning budget would look at as well. Anything that you would like to share?
Share, um, I believe the planning department would not be looking for any extended funds based on, on the, the conditions that were just laid out for us. I don't think we have any extra needs and if we do, we can be resourceful if they do should arise.
Sharpies, we need Sharpies.
Those are in.
We paid a premium for this stuff, right?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we may. Look at the salaries here.
Yes, indeed, I know.
You needed an assistant.
Come on. You're welcome.
So I think it is, I mean, obviously with this past year, um. The original.
Yeah.
You know, versus the actual for twenty twenty-four was less because we were without a town planner for most of the year. So.
It's those Sharpies that really do the job, office supplies.
So what happens to that money? Where did that go? How'd they use that? Cause you know we have needs for, for certain services, you know?
Very often it gets shifted to somewhere else when there's an excess. I mean, that's typical.
Right.
Um, I don't know that that's what happened in this case, but it's very typical. Another need comes up and those resources get, get transferred to someone else until another, until, until they fill that role.
Use it or lose it, that's what we say.
I mean, the only thing that I, that comes to mind that I'm, I think of is, um, we need to, we need to map the buildable land area. That's a safe harbor, um, for the town, not just the ten percent of subsidized housing inventory. We also have a one point five buildable land area which would hit us as a safe harbor. Um, you take the full land area, take out all the water, all of the, uh, conservation restrictions, you take out the roadways, you take out the railway. And, and then you, you check to see if your forty B developments encompass one point five of that buildable land area that remains. And, um, that's something that needs to be mapped. And, and I had previously reached out to Serp Ed and that's not something that they can do for us. So we would have to, and actually this is part of, of when we look at our, um, our goals. But that's something that I would like to see us try to find some money for, to do consultant.
Normally you wouldn't get that out of just your regular planning department budget. That would be more like a capital item, we would be hiring out for consultant. The town does not possess the GIS capacity, where there's no, um, there's no, we don't have the platform for it. And I wouldn't suggest they buy it, the expense is astronomical. And it really, it comes with a, a, a special skill set too. Like you really want someone who can really be able to run that, you know, ArcGIS, like someone really should. Um, I could check out Bridgewater and see what Bridgewater might be able to offer us for, they, they have students, there's ArcGIS classes. So I, I mean, it's worth a shot, um, but otherwise I will keep my eyes peeled for opportunities. Um, for, for funding, to hire a consultant to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that's really the only thing that I see is like an additional expense that isn't really in, in the budget. I know name tags, name placards have been mentioned because Slackboard, I mean, planning board has five year terms.
We can take that right out of the, out of the budget, absolutely.
Absolutely.
What else gets fancy ones?
Take a look and see what they got.
But other than that, anybody else have any comments about the budget? All right, so, um.
This sounds good.
I, I think we're already, it said, um, deadline for submission was Friday, January seventeenth.
He said he was fine with us meeting to have the planning board take a look at the budget.
Okay.
As I had just received it as well when I first came on. And we definitely wanted to make sure that the, the board had a chance to take a look at the budget. And see if there was anything in here that, you know, you needed for, or, you know, or so that we could take out.
Right, I mean, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, there's not a lot of extras, there's some training, office supplies, in-state travel and dues and subscriptions. And it's all. You know, fairly low dollar amounts.
Yeah.
Which. Seem good.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so. Do we want to send a memo back to the Slackboard, just letting them know, or to the town administrator, letting them know that we did review it and. Aside from, you know, potentially looking into that mapping.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it looks good.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right.
Do we want to take a vote on that? To send a memo?
Yeah, I'll make it, I'll.
Okay.
Make a motion to send a memo to the town administrator. Approving the budget, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion and a?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have agenda item number six, discuss site plan review, bylaw edits. So within our packet, uh, we do have the printout from our zoning bylaws with site plan review. Um, one of the items that came up is under C applicability. Um, for the items that site plan review applies to. Um, number two, it says, "In addition to an existing structure occupied by a business or industrial use resulting in a floor area of over fifteen hundred square feet in aggregate. Or a disturbance in lot coverage of over fifteen hundred square feet." Um, also, number six refers to new construction modification or addition to any residential structure which will disturb more than forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet of ground. So, that's about an acre of disturbance of ground. So, the problem is when you, when you look at under E review procedure, application. Applicants for a building permit subject to section two seventy six point seven C shall submit an application about as list fees, fourteen copies, site plan review. So the problem is if, if, if there's just disturbance in lot coverage, groundwork. And there's no, um, building, like for example, a, a parking lot. If, if they're not building a structure, that's not triggering site plan review. Because they're not submitting a building, uh, permit application. So I think we need to just make sure that we're not. Tie up a loop, loophole, so to speak, I guess, so we're not missing, um. A, a situation that should be looked at by site plan review. Maybe it's a large area that's, you know, disturbing a lot of ground. And, and now because they haven't pulled a building permit, no one in town knows what's going on, so, um.
So you're saying. Whether or not there's a building on it, if you be.
Well, so it already says that, it's already part of our site plan review, is, it says a disturbance in lot coverage over fifteen hundred square feet. But there's no trigger, so it doesn't say like as soon as you dig fifteen hundred square feet, or like if you, if you move fifteen hundred square feet, it doesn't say. You have to do, you have to submit a site plan review, it only says upon application for a building permit. So we have to have something in addition to that that also triggers these items that are also included in site plan review. Um, I don't know if that's something that.
Take a look at that.
Yeah.
Bring you some, yeah, bring you some, some suggested language.
Okay.
For you to take a look at.
And then the, the other thing, we've talked about architectural standards, I don't know if, if we're gonna take something to town meeting for our site plan review. If we should try to make that more. More.
More well-defined.
Yeah, there you go, thank you. Well-defined, because, um, a lot of it is, I mean, it says architectural standards, you know, shall apply to all new construction, which is very straightforward. But, um, it, it talks about strongly discouraged or, um, penalized prefabricated appearance are unacceptable. But it doesn't say it's not allowed, um, so maybe some just better language for those as well.
So who does that?
Well, I think, I think.
Nancy can do that, Nancy can look at it. Yeah, I'd be happy to, I'll pass it through Amy as well to make sure that anything that we're suggesting, um, would also pass the legal sniff test. Just to make sure I'm not stepping in over my ski tips.
Oh, you have a planner? So she can look into that. Um, is there anything else that anyone else wanted to discuss revising for site plan?
I think this is a good suggestion and update.
There'll be a few maybe suggestions that will come out of the permitting. Excuse me.
What's that, John?
Lighting, number seven, is that okay?
Lighting, um, yeah, it's supposed to be, um.
Number eight.
Lighting's on number seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's number seven, guess I'll make sure that we're all okay with that. What about signage, where is that?
Well, we have, we have a specific site, uh, bylaw for signs.
Mm-hmm.
And we actually do have, uh, dark sky compliant, um, bylaw.
This lighting will be here in eight. Lighting will be on seven.
Yeah, I think, I think we're covered for those, cause we, we all, we either mention or we reference back to where the standard.
Okay.
Oh, you know what, the other thing, when we, um. When we redid site plan review, it used to say open space committee. And that was one of the edits I had asked to have added last time, but it didn't get added back in there. So open space, we have Liz Nash, who, she knows native species. And if we have an opportunity to let her take a look at landscape.
Okay.
I would love her to be able to do that and, you know, make a comment back, because I have no idea what's native and not native. And we might as well use that resource, she is a volunteer on open space committee and, and I would love to see.
Add that to the review procedure number one, um.
Right.
Yep, E one.
E one.
Under the list.
To H, yeah, add H, open space.
Mm-hmm, and it, it used to be on there for site plan review, for it to go to open space, but, um, it was not included when we revised it last.
Sounds good.
So.
That's for their review, right, yeah, just for their comment, review comment?
Just for them to review and take a look at landscape and send us back comments.
Can't hurt.
No.
If, yeah, there's something that we're not knowing, outlining that we're, that's where, we're not looking at that aspect of it.
And we don't always get peer review on landscape, you know, unless it's a huge project that you think it, you know, should be done.
Mm-hmm.
So if she can just say, oh, well, they're using this street, they, maybe they can try this instead, I think, I think that's great.
Yeah.
So, um. If we're hoping to get this for spring and the warrant would open in March and close in March, do you think we can pull this off?
Do my best.
Yeah? I mean, it's, it's, it's just a couple minor edits and then.
Yep.
I think the major one is just to make sure that, that trigger for, um, site plan review.
Yeah, that sounds great, yeah.
All right, so should we put it on for our next meeting as well? It's gonna be deja vu, February seventeenth.
We'll, we'll, we'll add that, I'll see how far I can get, but I'm sure we should probably bring you something back.
Yeah, or should we push it to the twenty-seventh, twenty, thirteen?
No, thirteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do. And if it looks like it's gonna be pushed, I'll let you know.
Okay. So. Motion to continue that?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to continue the, um. What is that, the discussion site plan review bylaws edits till February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, agenda item number seven, planning board goals. All right, also in our packet, we have a good sized printout, thank you for printing it on the larger paper. Much easier to see. So this is kind of, this is good to, I, I know we have a lot of stuff on this agenda this evening. Going forward, it shouldn't be this bad, but I think, you know, bringing Nancy up to speed and just kind of catching up. Because we were hoping to do a lot of things over the winter that didn't happen because it's been non-stop.
Yeah, that's great.
So I guess we can just run real quickly through these and, and, um, so our goal number one, yearly review. so our goal number one yearly review of planning board goals to ensure goals are being met. Number two is establish individual goals for support staff. And so we did have a time bound, so those two are supposed to be done in May. So we have typically have election in April, you onboard the new members, and then in May discuss, um, goals yearly, um, establish individual, individual goals for support staff. That was one that I think we basically just asked Kathy to, to firm up a cutoff date for submissions, for new submissions. Obviously, we still have trickle-ins for a lot of things.
Yeah.
But also getting the agendas to us by Friday. She's been doing a great job with that. Thank you, Kathy. It makes a difference to be able to see it electronically first, you know, read through it and then, um, you know, have a chance to pick it up the following week. So that's been ongoing. As far as setting in, um, new goals, I think, I think you got your hands full as it is. Because I see this sort of as, this is kind of not just our list, but your list as well, um, to help us with.
And maybe there's, um, particular needs that the planning board actually has that we could support and provide information to. Trainings or things like that, um, any information that would help help you do your, do your job. That's what we're here for.
Excellent. Number three is review current zoning map to ensure compatibility with existing uses. Some of the details at one point, um, it's, it talks about is there a need for adult entertainment district? Because at one point we, that was on the agenda and it was like a red flag for me because we have adult bookstore. And, and it kind of encompasses all of that, but supposedly if, if you don't zone it, it could go anywhere.
Exactly.
So
One hundred percent. You're, you're right, spot on. So there was, and I want to say it was in the nineteen nineties when this came to be. And communities were struggling and trying to figure out where, where do we put this so that we don't end up with it everywhere? So they did. People would find a location generally closest to their neighboring a butter, budding community. As far away as possible, possibly on a wetlands, be, long, but they would, had to identify somewhere. So yes, you have to actually want to make sure that you keep a district. And if it's, if you already have one.
Well, so it's in the use chart, it says adult bookstore, and I think it's special permit in industrial only. I'm just, I'm not a hundred percent. That's going off of memory. I haven't looked in a while, but I think that's what it is.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's enough, or if we really should have a
Have it designated. We could take a look at the industrial zone and see what might be possible.
Because obviously Route forty-four, there's industrial up there. There's already one that way.
Yeah.
Maybe.
But, but the other side, yeah.
In Taunton. Where, where it's already built up, actually. How about the existing industrial park? But we also know that there are incompatibilities within the map itself.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's something that
You would want to make sure that your water resource protection district and the marijuana overlay district is on the map.
Yeah, and it's not.
The FEMA floodplain map is, is available in many aspects to anyone. And it complicates a zoning map when you put the floodplain map with the zoning map. So I, I would keep that one separate. Just note it that they could go to, um, FEMA or the website for that type of information to determine. And then you keep that as part of the things that you want them to put on a map or plan so that you know that they're at least paying attention to those flood zones. So that you're able to, to quantify that in a way that's helpful to the community. You don't want to have them put a structure in the flood zone. That's gonna be a problem for someone else.
Out of curiosity, on the flood zone, do those maps get updated?
Oh, it's horrible. Yeah, so, um, FEMA is not well-funded in the mapping division. I'm a, I have been a certified floodplain manager. And so I'm aware of the mapping has not been done well in Massachusetts. They did the coast probably back in two thousands. And then they recently came through the, the Bristol County area and did some of the major streams. I think there was a, a recent zoning update in twenty nineteen for this area, covering those stream areas, but no, they're not done very well. They rely on USGS information. They hire consultants to help them, um, do the mapping. Yes, but they're underfunded in that area. And it's very, it's key, right? Because your insurance is tied to those floodplain areas. If you happen to be in one, then you, if you have a mortgage, you're required to have floodplain insurance. And so, and if the town, you know, refuses to ignore some of the key features of the national floodplain insurance, then you can be dropped. So, and the whole community could be dropped. So there are some key aspects of making sure that floodplanes are, are something that you want to continue to pay attention to.
So I think we actually did it back when Barbara was on the planning board. I want to say twenty twenty-one, actually. And I think she was like, we need to do this because if not, people's insurance is not gonna cover.
Exactly.
So we, you know, things start pushing that through and to get, get done, so.
We heard Lakeville.
Absolutely. So we, we are, we've reached out to Serpide because we understand that Mark Resnick, your previous town planner, was potentially working with Serpide to do the zoning update. I don't know, uh, we're just at the beginning of the conversation. They're looking into it right now to determine where that is at and what else may need to be done. That was done with MA funds, so the, the money that the planning board has for technical services, like twenty hours in a year, a calendar year, so, um, and they're looking into how much, how much, how many hours we actually have for technical assistance to make sure that we're, we're gonna meet that high mark for the, for getting all the zoning pieces into play and get a final zoning map for you that has all the things in it that you need. Yeah. And I know that there's some tweaking, and people want to take a look at some of the other areas to make sure the lots are accurate, right down to the details. So we can probably take a look at those as well.
And, and actually, Jack and Dan were doing some driving around. We were kind of looking at the lower section of the zoning map because we were trying to see how we could take a look at it ourselves and focus on certain areas, so.
Yeah, great.
That's, um, it definitely needs to be done sooner rather than later. And so we do, we kind of arranged them in importance. So number four is review the use chart in zoning bylaws. That's something I've been saying I'd love to get a chance to do, but haven't gotten around to. Number five, create senior housing overlay district. Now, this one is something, um, just so you're aware, Nancy, at I want to see back over the summer.
July.
July or August, we had a presentation from a developer who is interested in creating a senior overlay over a portion of the Lakeville Country Club.
Okay.
So we, we, we invited the public, we had a number of residents speak, and they, they actually seemed to be in favor of it. And then they, the developer had reached out to the SLAC board to, to introduce and, and present to them as well. And I haven't heard back from them since, so I don't know. They're, the goal at the time was Springtown meeting. But they're, they're kind of running out of time. But I would look to them to say, you know, what do you want to see? And then for us to take theirs.
Contact, I'll be happy to reach out to them.
I do, so I can, I'll forward you that email, Shane, actually.
Yeah, they put on a nice presentation.
And I really liked the developer. He said he's, he came in to sell a project in Rainham. And he was talking about how he hates forty B, doesn't do a forty B because in order to sell, you know, these at, at such an affordable rate, you have to jack up the prices of, of the market rate units. And I was like, oh, I like this guy. A lot of people, even Barbara Stine, she stood up, she's like, I didn't want to like you. I do.
That's
So I think it's something that the town might be on board with.
Yeah.
But I don't know what happened.
See what happened to him and see if he's still interested in, in assisting with that.
It was Thorndike and
Yeah.
Yes.
They're the ones who did it.
Thorndike.
John Plumb.
Oh, they were all over too.
Collin Place.
It was like, he had placed in, what, Easton Mansfield.
Yeah.
Number six, complete review of forty R, forty B, and three A for identification of applicable property. So we actually, this is another item that's kind of in our packet later on. It looks like, so Serpide was, uh, completed the application. It looks like Andrew was able to submit it back on December
Yeah.
Fourth, I think it was. So, so that just, the town already has compliance. Serpide already did the review. They said that our existing smart growth forty R districts should make us compliant with the three A. How, uh, zoning? We don't, it's not a, a building, it's a zoning. It's creating zoning, but we already have the existing zoning, so it should be, should make us compliant. So that has been submitted to the state. All it was, was an application.
And it's required. It's a requirement.
Right, even though now the dates are kind of out the window and there's still things to be ironed out and
Absolutely.
So that one actually, I think we could move down and say, you know, basically achieved and ongoing. Number seven, review planning board rules and regs to ensure consistency and up-to-date target a complete review within five years. So this was great because we got the money. We got forty-eight thousand dollars for Serpide to, um, to do that for us. And I think the target is spring, summer. For working on that.
And we have, um, reached out to Serpide to potentially have a kickoff meeting and provided them with the upfront data. So there's a big data dive in the beginning before they even begin, and then the, there'll be a kickoff meeting. I'll let you know when that is and, yeah, and get that underway.
Yeah, nice. Number eight, hold one combined meeting with CPA and CONCOM.
Didn't happen.
Uh, that hasn't, we had it for December yearly, thinking it was gonna be slow in December. It has not been slow. So that's kind of on a that's like a if we can fit it in kind of thing. We know, we've met with, you know, Nancy now a couple times, um, well.
I guess we kind of had, yeah.
Oh, but never with CPA, which would be kind of
So just so I'm a better understanding of what the purpose of that meeting is, could someone just give me some background information?
So that was, uh, basically to help just open communication. So one of the reasons, one of the things that, you know, this board, whether it was hiring a planner or a coordinator or some other role, we, we were in agreement that we need to see better communication and coordination with, you know, with other town, uh, departments, officials, boards, committees, commissions, et cetera. So that was kind of, um, something that we saw as a potential to, you know, have discussions with conservation because a lot of times we look at the same plans, but they look at one aspect, we look at another. And we thought it would be nice to just have that sort of, uh, communication as well as CPA. Obviously, it's spending, you know, tax dollars and, and planning board has a member. I'm, I'm that member on CPA, on CPC. But instead of just me being the liaison and go and, you know, go between to, to actually give the board a chance to discuss what we want to see and, and if there's anything that, that coincides with, you know, the plan and whatnot. But, but, um, in the past too, I have announced, you know, the CPC is holding a public hearing, so anybody, anyone can go as a member of the town and voice your, um, opinions during that public hearing. So CPC will be having a public hearing on February twentieth, so. That will be next month.
I just want to add, in, uh, in other communities, they sometimes have what they call interdepartmental meetings or inter, like having all of not just department heads, but also the boards, committees, commissions, all together. One time a year or twice a year to discuss any big overarching issues that the community is being faced with in order to, to work out all the details amongst all the different entities that have to deal with certain things. And people have found that to be helpful.
I would love to see that for a big forty B project, especially. Because I feel like, yes, we'll send comments, you know, but it's, it's, it's so much different. I thought it was great on the twenty-sixth when we were all in the same room and had a chance to hear from all different points of view, like
That's exactly kind of what you, you know, what you were having.
So, I mean, especially with forty B, like, you know, it would be great to have that out the gate instead of, um,
Yeah.
At the high school.
So number Number nine is implementation of applicable master plan goals, um, to communicate this regularly with master plan. So we did discuss with Jack because Jack is our master plan, um, liaison member, representative, et cetera. So we wanted to leave this as sort of, because we wanted to look at the goals monthly, but as you saw since August, we haven't looked at it.
Yeah.
Because we just got so busy.
My plan would be to give them a copy of this.
You could.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what they want.
You could do that.
Yeah. That's what the chairman would like, and I, you know, we, you had given me some of the goals, but I think this is a nice formal.
Yes, some of these goals might not actually align with the master plan, but this does give them an idea of what we are working on, and we can always add to this too. And if there's a specific question, you can always go between. But the reason we had this on here was just as a kind of monthly conversation, what's master plan looking at?
Rodney's not so much concerned about how it can, it interacts with the master plan, but what are we doing?
Right.
There's, you know, there's so much, if you go to a master plan board meeting, there's so much disconnect between them and everybody else. And I, and I recommend to them, you should have regular meetings, bring, the only one, the only one's father's been in was Buck Knotts. Is bring every one of the committee members and have them sit down and tell us what they're doing. So we have something. So, you know, this is great if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Nancy, I would give this to Rodney and have him
Yeah, I mean, I'd maybe give him like, we'll, we'll do like a revision to this with all the updated edits and then maybe send it to them.
Yeah, because I gotta, your next meeting is until February
It's in February.
In February ninth?
Ninth, twelfth.
Maybe, I don't know. I can find out for you. But I mean, if if we do that and if we could put over here, I might, we've just been listening to you guys, put in what's where we are, then that would be fine. We just add
Yeah, well, because if they read down through the status, they should be able to get an idea of where these things stand.
We do that.
All right. The next one is adopt a stormwater management bylaw. So that's another item that's underway. We had a meeting with Serpide and, um, building commissioner, DPW director, new town planner, uh, myself and John, and, um, we were able to kind of go over their questions, what they, uh, wanted to focus on for the stormwater bylaw and make sure that they were on, on target, basically. And I think it was supposed to be a half hour and it was like hour and a half, two hours long, something like that. And so I think they got, you know, their hands full with, with feedback. But that, we're supposed to be seeing an edit this, this month, I think, or February, February, I think they said.
February.
Yeah. So, and they had, they already had a draft. We, we had a, a draft from environmental partners, so they just had to go, kind of go through that draft and make sure that it's tailored to us and and, um, so hopefully that'll be on Springtown meeting as well.
Yeah.
Hopefully. And they did promise it to me by the end of the year, but unfortunately, one of the women was on maternity leave, so I think everything got backed up.
It must be Michelle.
Uh, Danica.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's still on target, hopefully, for Springtown meeting. February draft. Number eleven, update priority protection and priority development areas. That's another item. We have, um, the specifics later on in this agenda packet, but that was completed. And we do have the final from that. So we can move that down to completing it, pleaded an ongoing. Number twelve, zoning change request process. That was something that, um, we had discussed, so, so rather than doing a citizen petition, which citizen has to collect signatures, it can't go through town council, is, is sort of a better option. If it's something that they want to sort of bring to us, and if it's something that everybody agrees, oh, this is a great idea, then do it properly so that at least they have, you know, legal opinion. It's not you know, a bylaw that's kind of thrown together and has issues at town meeting or anything like that. Um, and we had discussed, I think I came up with like a FAC and a process that I had found from another town, and I sent it off to SLAC board, and then we talked about, oh, we'll bring this up after Springtown meeting. And then it still got pushed off again. But that's still something, it's lower down on the priority list, but it would be nice to, to because I think the SLAC board has to implement the process, but if, if it's zoning related, you know, planning board But if, if it's zoning related, you know, planning board will look at it. And that's what we had had, we had had somebody, um, who was trying to go the citizen petition route for a zoning change. And we were trying to figure out a way to better help residents who are looking for that sort of thing. That's on the future ever, if ever a chance there is at time. 13, explore an agricultural district. Obviously we have a lot of farmland that we'd like to see protected. Dan even helped look in into, um, some different districts that other towns have and some bylaw language. Something to consider for the future.
Absolutely.
Obviously not a priority, but still something to keep on the radar.
Keep that on my radar as well.
Yeah. And, and so then when we have, if we have grant money or if we have hours available for Serpide, somebody help us to do it too.
Absolutely.
Number 14, establish tracking and map a buildable land area. There's your 1% buildable land area. I've been trying to get that thing done. For me, that was kind of more of a priority. I would like to see it further up than 14. But, um, but it was kind of, after I, you know, reached out to Serpide, I had to move it down because we didn't have.
Anybody to do it.
Yeah, anybody to do it. We didn't have the money to do it, so. And we're not going to get a state grant to do that. You know, this state's not going to be like, yeah, sure, here, find a state power.
To, to get rid of the, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Unless we call it something different.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
We still would want to know what the buildable land area would be in the community without knowing what could happen to it. Just to know what you have. Maybe just, just slightly tweaking what your ask is might be a better way to go.
Oh, I like that idea. As long as they don't watch public meetings.
Sounds silly.
So, yeah, that's definitely something I'd like to see done. Number 15, remove and redo mixed use. That's actually something we did bring to town meeting last spring and it failed. I guess the residents like poorly written bylaws. And then you heard Rhino had frozen zoning, by submitting their subdivision. But it's still honestly like, even though it's all built up at this point, or very close to being all built up, like just leaving that existing with, like, there's a lot of things that could go wrong with that bylaw. I think it's definitely worth.
Taking a look at.
Yeah, taking a look at it, maybe doing some better education. Maybe I didn't communicate it well enough. Last year.
So you got two year.
The summer meeting.
Yeah, so, and then, yeah, I would do a lot of public education. Cause sometimes you, you come back and they go, no, I'm pretty sure we told you no.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, and then it's never coming back.
Well, I think people were thinking that it meant that there'd be more residential housing as opposed to business, but it's like, no, your underlying zone is business.
Right.
You know, in that front section and, um.
And being able to allow something up above or something mixed in.
Yeah, but so our mixed use, and, and honestly, maybe it's better to revise it. And actually, I'd like to see it placed somewhere else because now that it's all built up and it's not really, I think a lot of people are disappointed with, with what they got with mixed use.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, there's some retail, but there's, there's a lot of housing now.
Yeah.
It's not uncommon, a lot of times that they feel like the, the businesses wouldn't be supported. So they put in the more residential than the actual business. I've seen that in other communities as well where they had a mixed use, um, bylaw. It was used on a parcel and more residential was actually built in. Actually, uh, in some cases, no business was built at all. Just because there was one small tweak in the bylaw that kind of allowed for that.
I think people were thinking, we want to see retail shopping with some 55 plus. But, you know, what, what we got is a lot different.
Yeah.
So I think that's, it definitely needs to be at the very least tweaked.
Yeah.
Revised.
Yeah.
But I would like to see it. Maybe there's another area of like Route 18 or somewhere where it makes sense to do a mixed use. So leave that where it is to, you know, if there's ever time. Number 16, monthly updates from Serpide rep. We added that because we had the master plan rep updates and David is our Serpide rep. So if there's anything that you want to share from Serpide.
Yeah, it hasn't been much of, of anything going on, but just a couple, a couple of things that just, just popped up in my mind in the last two days.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so anything interesting that you have, feel free to share. Now, are you going to be attending Serpide meetings too or no?
David is the Serpide rep for the planning board. So David would be the one to be attending the meetings.
Gotcha. So anything of interest for Nancy as well?
Yeah, okay. Just keep me posted. If there's anything I can help you with, David, just let me know.
Not, not immediately, but I think I'll come see you next week just to sit down and.
Sounds great.
Spitball.
All right, so that's our goals. There's 16 of them. There's two we'll move down and lighten it up a little. And we'll maybe make some edits and then send it over to.
Want to edit?
Well, no, we'll, we'll edit and then send it over so that you can, um, get it over to master plan.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Number eight, administrative update, MBTA new regulations. Did you want to take this one, Nancy?
I don't, I had to be honest with you, um, I didn't go deep dive into the new guides. It was interesting, um, the Attorney General versus the town of Milton had clearly said that they were wrong and immediately thereafter, the new guides came out. So they were already preparing the areas that they had made mistakes. And since they didn't highlight them, I'd have to compare both of them to make sure I was actually capturing what they were actually getting at, um, where the judge actually meant in his, his findings. But I could do that if you wish.
Oh, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary because like, like I said, we're, we're, we're basically in compliance without creating additional zoning. But I am, the way I see it, from what I follow, it does sound like it's still got a road ahead of it. And there may be further revisions.
Always.
Maybe further cases.
Yeah.
Or.
Same with the ADU as well. I don't think they're quite there yet. They jump out ahead and then fix it after, I guess.
Well, cause I think they didn't, the, there was part of it that said, you know, the governor is calling this an emergency housing crisis in order to pass these. And there was no judgment made on that.
Right.
So.
Yeah, Needham recently turned down, they, they had a townwide vote.
Oh, a lot of towns have. I think it's up to like 40 or so now that have said no at town meetings, so.
I'm not surprised. It's quite a bit.
I'm not either.
Oh, I think Lakeville would have said no too.
It was actually a shock at the number of units that they wanted. And I think they sometimes, they don't go out further than, you know, where they are located to see what's going on in other communities, sewer, water, all of those things we don't have. And building those types of, of units is, you'd have to have sewer and water on the site and it gets a little bit more complicated when you're talking about, you know.
Along with the impact on the school system.
Well, that's the other thing. So the problem is, so even though Lakeville's compliant, we are a school district, we're regional with Freetown. And Freetown is now required because they have a rail, so 750 units. They have to zone for that.
Yeah.
So now, so that's why, even though, yes, we're compliant, we should keep an eye on it. Because if it affects Freetown, it'll affect our schools and our budget and our pockets.
Yeah.
So definitely worth keeping an eye on and, and any further.
I'm sure that they will, uh, it goes, I'm on, are any of you on Masterless Serv?
No.
I'll, I'll send you the, the link to, to hop on. It's, it may be too much though, cause it will inundate your emails. But if something hot comes up, then immediately you get many emails to kind of look at what's going on. Yeah, usually not much passes through. Some, some of the planners are like paying attention at the very highest level. I'm not sure what else they got going on, but yeah.
One other thing to note about this 3A too, is that Rep Suesi recently, um, he submitted three bills that one of them is a complete repeal of the 3A. And then two of them are revisions and edits and, and, you know, changes to it. So we'll see. Because I, if, if, so it's, it's, it's hard to say. It's hard to say, you know, a lot of these representatives, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what the people want. Some of them, if, if they're listening to their residents and they're hearing the no votes, maybe, maybe something will change. We'll see.
Yeah, yeah. Cause so far it appears that they are on, in line with more housing.
Oh, boy.
Stay tuned.
I mean, can you imagine just the board health and them getting a bunch of revisions and updates to septic and all that, really classic, and then just, I don't know. It's, it's ridiculous.
So the next item here.
Yeah.
The next item here is the permitting construction process, so. And actually I ended up with three copies.
You're doing anywhere, I guess.
But. So this is something that Nancy, you have suggested that we include this in our rules and regulations when we do the revision.
Yeah, and it's, and these processes sometimes can be helpful for, um, for the developer as well as the planning board and the department heads and staff that sometimes have to be involved. It gives them the opportunity upfront. So the first item would be to create a technical review committee and provide that opportunity for staff to review a plan before it gets too far into, um, final, final drafts. So then they can give comments so that they're making thoughtful comments before it gets to 100% and gets before you. And then all those comments come in as a, you have the 35 days to do that. This provides this upfront opportunity. The second option, which is, is, it's another option as well, is that you provide the applicant an opportunity to come in at an informal meeting. It's, it'd be like the first, first item on the agenda. It's informal. They present their ideas and give a, you know, a rough draft design of where it is that they plan to go to get the feedback from the planning board as well. And then that, that leads into your, your full submission. These have been found to be very helpful. It may cut down on missed items and may be able to provide a more streamlining process for the applicant as well. Cause then they have more confidence that their plans, by the time they get to you, are actually something that is closer to, to approval. The application, um, these are certain things that I think that could be added to your applications. Right now you currently have like one pager. These other items could be considered adding so that what they are providing, um, is upfront. Like a request of waivers is a list and what it is that they're, what they're, what waiver they're looking for and why. That way, when you are, go to write a decision, you can include that type of information and it's clearly written. And they have already provided that to you, so you can make that determination. Instead of it coming piecemeal as they're going through their presentation, it's like upfront. These are the waivers we're going to ask for and this is what the planning board will know that they'll be looking for. And it also gives the peer review some guidance as well. And then also saying something to the effect that holds them accountable for the materials that they have provided you, almost like an affidavit of sorts to sign off on the application and the plan, that these are, to the best of my knowledge. It sometimes, um, would be helpful maybe for, for you to make sure that they are something that, um, that they deemed appropriate for you to see. And then an application with a checklist of all of the items that you're requiring in your, your bylaw and your rules and regs. Is it an easy way for us to check to make sure that those items are accounted for in their application? And then also for them to make sure that they're adding it to their packet. So we're not piecemealing it, like, oh, you forgot this, you forgot that. This is just a clean way to make sure that, um, what you're receiving is something that you wanted to see and that they didn't miss something. And I know we get busy in the office. We can't always catch things that, and I think there was something here tonight that we probably could have caught in advance. But, I mean, just having that checklist helps us to kind of take a look at all the materials. And maybe a few other items that could be added to that as well. To make sure that all of the information, um, that you'd want to know about in advance is being provided.
The only other thing I can think of is, cause we have that dark sky bylaw.
Yeah.
And, um, so some of them will include, I think, we just had for Harding. They actually had the, the lumens
Yeah.
shown on their original submission. So I was impressed because usually that's something, it's like you got to remember to ask for it.
Right. Yeah, so now you would just add that to the checklist and you shouldn't have to ask for it. It should already be something that's included at the very beginning.
Excuse me.
When they, when they give you the, the full submittal. You okay? Yeah, go ahead. It's because every item we have on the agenda tonight is more, more in depth.
Yeah, Harding Street, that was pretty straightforward when they had that plan. Very well laid out.
Not, so not every engineer or any, any applicant can kind of figure those pieces out on their own. And maybe they're not in tune to those kinds of things. So it's good to kind of, when it's in the application, then it's hard to ignore. It's right there.
It's your checklist.
Yes, yes, exactly. And you have the little box next to it and make sure there's a check on it.
So the, the only thing that I would say, so for the, ooh, excuse me. I don't know what the heck happened. The pre-submission co- conference or you have optional, like a public meeting. I definitely think it needs to be public because mistrust, things that have happened in the past. I don't want to see department heads just meeting and not having it public. So I definitely think that would be important to. It doesn't have to be like a public meeting so much as maybe if you can do it in a public setting and have Lakeham record.
Yeah.
Anything that.
I've done it that way, so let me think about that.
Okay.
Just let me see if I can wrap my head around how that would work.
Cause I feel like it's either or, like, I don't think we need both.
Right.
But definitely, just because there's a mistrust.
Yeah.
And, and for good reason.
So, so I'll just, uh, having sat through and set up many meetings, what generally happens is, um, fire will take a look at the plans, similar to what Mike did with the, with, with the, um, the trash receptacles. Um, all of those things are brought out upfront at that meeting. You need, you need a 20 foot radius around the building to make sure that that fire apparatus can make those turns. Highway will generally want to take a look at their drainage to make sure that what they're doing isn't going to impact his world. And have them take a look at that. In other instances, you have, you know, um, conservation issues. For example, we looked at a floating solar array. So you have a lot of things to consider as far as a floating solar array. It sounds like it's simple because it's sitting on top of the water. But there's going to be structures that are holding them in place that are in the bentic. How do you get out there? Like what, how, what are the impacts to the, to that bentic and the species and all of those questions? They're interesting to all of us who, that is our discipline. And, and it would be maybe interesting to the, um, to the public. But we generally find that those meetings are held as a, as a courtesy to the developer. Not as something that we're trying to hide anything. It's to make it better for the community in the long run, to make sure that all of those items that are key to a final product are addressed based on each different staff's discipline and what they know.
No, I, I agree.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying from the perception.
Yeah.
Chances are someone who doesn't know is going to say, well, what were, what was discussed behind closed doors? How come now they're being, they're able to do that? Or, you know, they, they weren't able to build there previously, you know, they are, so like.
So this, this is.
So, so just for an example, so the last meeting, the gentleman with the A and R, he said basically to us, oh, when I was on planning board, I did favors for other people. And I mean, that's, that's not uncommon. You know what I mean? It, it's definitely something that created a mistrust. And so I think this is great because I think it does just get everybody in the same room.
Right.
That's optimal. But if there's a way of doing it so that it's, there's, there's no question about it, you know what I mean? So, oh, you can look and, and watch the meeting on this date. So, oh, you can look and, and watch the meeting on this date or, or something that just makes it more transparent. I think that's the only issue that people might have with it.
Okay. Well, let's take a look and see how we could make that happen. I've not seen it done that way, but it doesn't mean it can't be done that way.
So even if it's like an, like an opportunity where anybody could walk in or something like that, something that, that I love the idea, because I think communication and, and collaboration is, is what we need.
And it may cut down on the memos and things like that, because, I mean, they could still write a memo, but it may not be necessary, because what will happen is they'll get to see that when it's submitted, that their suggestions were taken into consideration and that they were put onto the plan. And generally speaking, they, they do wanna make sure that they're meeting all those high marks. You know, that they are putting in the, the type of, um, passageway for fire apparatus. They don't wanna miss those types of things. And, you know, they'll try to cut those corners, but if you catch them in advance, they can get addressed. But certainly we'll take a look at how we can make that public and how that best would work.
That's the only thing. But other than that, I think it's great. And I'd love to see the checklist and tweaks to the application to make it better and, yeah.
Sounds good. Then the only other item that would, um, would be, be a consideration is the, the outside, when, after the project has already been permitted. And then you have more construction oversight, keeping that fifty-three G count alive after the fact so that you can have the inspections done during periodic opportunities, when the drainage is getting developed, when you, the base is put in, curb cut, things like that, the plantings. Things that need to be addressed by an engineer can then be put into oversight on the backside. I can do some, uh, the highway, uh, highway department could do some. But in, having an extra oversight on an engineer's side for some of these other detailed things like a drainage is most important. It can avoid some other issues for, for abutting residents, um, in the future, to make sure that it's done properly. Cause if it's not checked and it's gone unchecked, then you don't know if it was built the way that you had approved it. So that's where those checks and balances come in. And that's the back, the back half. You know, it's, it's, it's an interesting concept. They don't like it when you show up, because then it's more oversight for them. But it's a good thing to do, cause it makes them, it makes them know that the town cares about how things are put on the ground. That it's not just, oh yeah, we just permitted it, but then we don't see it ever again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's something that.
That's a big part of it, I think.
It's a huge part of it, yeah. And so, um, we have reached out to, um, to Apex to get some, some figures and a proposal in case that's something that you wanna move forward with. And they'd be happy to be that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah? So, so what do you want us to do with this at this point? Cause.
So you give me guidance. It sounds like I should check and see how I could make the, um, the tech review work with public. That we could revise the applications to include a checklist and maybe some of the comments so that you get the waivers in advance and you also get, um, assurance that what you're providing you, they say is true to the best of their knowledge. Not that they're not, but it's just, it's a, it's a double check and it, it'll make someone pause if they have to sign it in such a way. And then, and then, um, and then we'll, we'll bring you back the proposal that I get from Apex.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Okay, so, so even though you wanna incorporate this into the rules and regs, we could do this prior.
I can, I'm gonna start putting it together.
Okay.
Especially like get that checklist going, um, and things of that nature.
Do you want us to formally put it on the agenda for another date?
Yeah.
Okay. What date? Do we want it for the next meeting or the following?
Let's do the following.
Okay.
The thirteenth is starting to be, um, be full.
So the twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh. Yeah, then they have it.
We wanna take a vote to continue this item to the twenty-seventh? The permitting and construction process?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the, uh, discussion for the planning board permitting construction process to February twenty. February twenty seventh, twenty-seventh, twenty-five, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the final PPA PDA, so that's the priority protection in development areas that we discussed earlier from the goals. It is completed. I had shared it with Rita from Master Plan, cause this is one of the maps in our master plan. The other thing, maybe get it on the website, the webpage?
Absolutely.
Most notable, you can see that we've increased the green, which is a priority protection. The next item is the Red Hand Brewing. So we have an, a memo in here from, um, the select board and, and town administrator, but this is not the most recent. January fourteenth, I got an email from him and I believe Nancy, you were on it as well, about, um, Red Hand Brewing. So originally, we have a set of conditions in here that planning board had included. Two conditions on behalf of the select board, because the select board had said that they wanted to see signs as well as, um, an indemnification clause. Because Red Hand Brewing is right next to the town property and they didn't want people parking there now that it's been open. And then, and the, the owner has been asking, you know, what do you want for signs? What do you want for signs? There hasn't been an issue, even, even with their grand opening, there wasn't an issue. So now this, uh, town administrator did say that the select board does not appear to be in favor of signs right now. So we could potentially update these conditions. Kathy did revise it, the agenda to say possible vote, so that we can vote to amend these conditions and just say, add a condition that says, you know, condition three and five shall only apply if, if there becomes a problem with parking in municipal lot or something like that, because there's no issue right now. And there's really no reason to make them comply with putting up additional signs where it's gonna interfere with snow removal and now need to be up kept and.
Yep.
So, do, are, are you comfortable creating wording to that effect? And, and we'll just make a, a motion to add an additional condi- condition to this decision? That'll, that is basically on a nasnated basis. If there's any future problem.
I mean, it's good to know that there's no issues currently right now.
Exactly.
And a lot of those businesses are closed.
Exact, that was when they went through site plan review, that was brought up as well, so.
Yeah.
So would someone like to make that motion to add an additional condition to this decision?
I'll make a motion to add an additional condition to the, the three forty-eight Bedford Street. I don't know what the additional condition would be.
Well, um.
For parking.
For progress, yeah, for.
For future parking.
Future parking, uh.
Concerns.
Yeah, compliance.
Compliance.
Do you have a suggestion?
I think you, you, you said it well, and I'm trying to read my writing. And a condition, um, as amended, as amended, as it deems appropriate, something to that nature, is, is only if it's, only if it's necessary is kind of where you wanna.
Right. For just those, um, number three and.
Three and five.
Five.
We can call out three and five in the, in the condition and say, um, as needed, as appropriate or as appropriate, however you feel, best language.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion. And a second, all in favor?
Rusty, I'm right, my condition's too obvious.
And I appreciate Red Hand Brewing owner for being so patient and compliant and willing. The last item under administrative update is thirteen Main Street, review revised lease, possible vote. So we do have the lease. I did speak with Nancy prior to our meeting. And although one item that town council had requested was included, the mention of the, um, addendum A was not referenced within the lease body. I think it was misunderstood. I think, so it, it's added under the lease addendum A, where it said is incorporated into and made part of the lease, but it's not in the body. It, it doesn't just have to say that it needs to be included in the.
Yeah, it only falls under two point five assignments and subletting, which says that any assignment, sublet or concession, let me see, concession or license to use the lease premises must maintain compliance with the age qualification requirement of addendum A. So again, I, there's just, it's very vague on where the addendum A falls in. Cause like you said, it's not on the upfront, on the, on the, it should be under.
Oh, wait, where are you seeing that?
Two point five.
Oh, oh, oh.
But actually if they left out addendum A entirely, then.
Oh, you mean right here? That was the second item. So town council had said two items.
It needs to not be an addendum, it just needs to be in the lease.
Cause they can, they can, yeah, exactly. They could, like you're saying, they could exclude addendum A every single lease.
Right.
It should be right up front.
Yeah. All right, so and, and I believe you did already.
I reached out to them to let them know that this was missing from, from the actual lease itself. Only an addendum. And I, I clearly cut and pasted the language to be brought out front into the lease.
And was it only that only one member had to be? I thought it was one of the leases had to be fifty-five and over. This just says one person living, one occupant.
Yeah. That was, that's part of the badly worded mixed use zone.
We're thinking it'd have to be the named T-Mobile, Amer.
One of the two named on the lease.
Yeah.
So, so let's take a vote on this, just to make it official, um, so that, to, um, make sure that it's addressed, if you wouldn't mind. Just make it, making it official that, you know, to town planner will work with, um.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to have the town planner, um, I guess draft up, um, additional comments for the lease to have it.
And actually, should we just allow Nancy to approve instead of it coming back to us?
Yeah.
I'll share it with, I'll share it with you.
I mean, if there's any issue that you run into, you'll, you'll hand it to Amy, town council, to make sure that it's done. But we, we know what we're looking for, as long as he sends it back, maybe make a motion to, to allow town planner to.
Make a motion to allow town planner to make additional comments to the owner about, for the lease agreement for thirteen Main Street.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we won't see that one again. Number nine, informational ADU letter. As we had discussed at our last meeting, we had the draft from KP Law, which was their response to the Commonwealth in regards to the ADU, um, draft. So that was sent. It's also included in the packet, which is good, because now it's available for everyone in town to see exactly what was submitted, if they wanna look up the agenda, so that's in there. That's really the only reason we put it on this agenda, so everyone can see. Also, the Rocky Woods letter was also included so that, um, everyone could take a look and see what was sent over to, uh, that, the owner for Rocky Woods. So that was really just informational only, no action needed. Agenda item ten, approved November fourteen, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes. I only had one item, I'm sorry Kathy. Number seven, uh, page seven, one, on the fifth, so the second from the bottom paragraph, right where it says Elizabeth Ennis and Steve Shara Shakari from EP, just environmental partners, because I don't think it's spelled out prior.
I think, I'll check, but usually if it's spelled out once.
Yeah, it's enough, right.
Cause it'd be in parentheses stating that, yeah.
So as long as it's in there.
See if it's previously stated.
Okay. That's good then. All right, so any other edits? All right, motion to approve is drafted with a potential edit if necessary.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Thursday, November fourteen, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes, as drafted, minus the one potential edit if required.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries in the, next meeting is February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the Lakeville Police Station. Any other business? Oh, actually, we do have another meeting. So on, next Thursday, January thirtieth. Nancy, have we had any, uh, one else respond? So, so the town administrator responded, Nate Darling responded, the Board of Health?
We, the letter is gone.
No, but I mean for next meeting, for.
Yes, I have not heard from most people, um, who have not responded at all. I can reach out to them again. Um, we did not hear back from the attorney or, or.
So I did hear, um, earlier today, before this meeting, I did speak with Nate and he said that he had spoken to the attorney and we should expect to hear a response.
Okay.
So I don't know when that is, but just that there's something.
And for the agenda, for the meeting, what would you be?
I really just wanted to have the one item, just kind of discussion of Rocky Woods and, um, prepare for whatever, um, response we get. Which kind of covers a little, a few bases. So that's next Thursday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at the library.
At the library, okay.
And yeah, if you don't mind, just reaching out and seeing how many are confirmed.
And if, and see how many people are actually able to come that night.
Yeah, and it, I mean, that way we know who else is, um, posting for the meeting and.
Yeah.
What's that?
Seven still?
Seven, yeah, I think we said seven.
Seven?
Right Kathy? Yeah.
Everybody will be, from this board will be in attendance.
All right, any other business? All right, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, eight forty-seven P M.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.